I'm going to call to order the April third, twenty twenty-three city council work meeting. Is our motion adopted on this agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. Item number three, ISD fifteen presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. ISD fifteen school board chairperson Mike Starr and superintendent Carson Anderson will present a report of the school district. Discuss matters of common interest and answer the school board related questions that the council may have. Carson?
Do I just stand up here?
If you would, please.
Thank you, Jack, for inviting us today. We had a great conversation earlier, a couple of months ago, and you extended the invitation, so we're glad to be here. I hope you don't mind if if I don't have a formal presentation. I just took some notes for kind of an oral discussion, and I would love to hear your questions and comments. You know, for the school district, that's why I'm here. But I just have a real brief presentation about some of the big things happening in our school district. First of all, we always want to start with our goals that we have. And we have four primary goals that we're focused on for the next three to five years. First of all, we have some, like every other school district in the state. We want to work on enhancing our student behavior throughout the system. I'm not sure if you've heard or not, but schools are struggling at all levels, including the elementary levels, in terms of, you know, what's happening in classrooms and in the hallways and those kinds of things. So that is one of our top priorities. We're also focused on increasing our math and reading scores. And then, one thing that I find really exciting is that we're having even a stronger focus on career readiness. And so, we have a, we have some really good programming in the school already, like with Saints Manufacturing, where our kids in a high school class actually get a bid from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. And then we use our equipment under the, under the leadership of a teacher to actually build snowplow parts that are used by MinDOT. And it's a great learning experience for our kids. We actually make some money off of it that can be used to buy more equipment and those kinds of things. We want to expand that kind of programming so that we can offer more career experiences for our kids. It's a really important thing for us. We also think it it relates really well with, you know, our communities as well. Recently, we approved several new hires. And the the new hires that that we made are directly related to the goals that we're focused on in terms of hiring some administrative support to deal with student discipline. Some instructional coaches to help our teachers become better math and reading teachers and those kinds of things. And so that was a big decision that the board just approved recently. In case you haven't heard, I'm sure the city of East Bethel is experiencing this too, but we're having a hard time finding people to work. And so we're making every effort to reach out, not only locally, but even across the state, to find people to join us. And so we're actively looking to 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 find the people that we just approved, the positions that we just approved. Another thing that's good news for the school district is that our fund balance has been growing. And I'm not saying we have a lot of money, that's not it at all. But we were in statutory operating debt for some time, and for the last ten-plus years, we've really made an effort to get back on the good side of the budget. And so we actually have a fund balance. We're expecting that we'll approve a fund balance policy of twelve percent at an upcoming board meeting. And that's joy to all of us because for many years it it was a struggle financially. We're also anxiously looking at what the state legislature will provide to schools. And so we're closely monitoring some bills there. It's a big part of the state budget, and we believe that we'll get, education will get a decent increase this year. We don't know if it'll be four percent one year and two the next, or four and five. You know, they're working on that, just like they are with, I'm sure, local government aid and some other things that impact the city here. There are also some mandates in the possible legislation that could cost us some money. And personally, I'm sort of a a local control guy. You know, I think it's important for us, for the state, to let local people make decisions. And that goes for schools too, so we're, you know, we sometimes lobby, you know, our local legislators to make sure that those kinds of decisions are made locally as much as possible. Also, I I'm not sure if you've been through a a school facility in St. Francis area, public schools recently or not. If not, I hope you do. Because the changes here have been fantastic. Thanks to a referendum passed about six or seven years ago. All of our buildings, all of our school buildings were renovated in some form or fashion. So many people walk through the buildings now and they don't even recognize what they were ten or twenty years ago. And I'm an outsider coming in. And I'll tell you what, my first impression of the facilities here were extremely positive. So we want as many people to visit our sites as possible because we're we're proud of them. And also, I think it it was money well spent. So we're thankful to the residents here and residents throughout the district for approving that referendum six or seven years ago. It was money well spent. Do you have any questions about that before I talk about a couple of issues of mutual concern?
Go ahead.
Perfect. Three big issues that I have, but I'm sure that the council members will will have some more as well. First of all, you may have heard that we had some water issues at Cedar Creek Elementary School, which is right next to East Bethel Elementary School, right in the area here. And one of our wells tested positive for bacteria. And we did the testing because we received a complaint about the discoloration of our of our water. So we actively did some testing. One really good thing is that we passed the tests, except for the bacteria. But we've also found out with the recent test that it was not E. coli related in any way. So that was the most important result that we had. We're still testing, you know, the water at both schools, just to see if, you know, what kind of bacteria we have. And then we have a pretty aggressive remediation work going on. And so you'll you'll see some changes to to make sure that that discoloration, you know, is addressed in the in the near future. In the meantime, we have bottled water for kids. We're using bottled water to to cook with. Our safety consultant did conclude that the water is safe for hand washing. But we're not drinking until we know the the full scope of what the bacteria we're talking about is. Kind of related to that, of course, you know, a dream for us would be to somehow access the the water system here in East Bethel. I know that's a longer range plan. It would cost money. There'd have to be discussion about how much the school would have to to pay to do that. But I think it's something that we would definitely consider as you move forward with some of your future planning.
I think the city would be very open to that.
Yeah. And I realize that's a big decision for everyone, and so, you know, all sides would need to take a look at it carefully. But it would really benefit us, I think, in the long term, and hopefully the city as well. Related to that, Mike and I received a lot of information from Tim and Jack about, you know, some of the plans for the city in terms of potential growth. And so, obviously, as a school district, we're very interested in monitoring what is being planned. And so I know that Jack will be a great resource as as we move forward. One thing I'll add, I'm a resident of East Bethel. And so I'm, I, you represent me as well, which is exciting, and East Bethel's a great place to live. And, you know, I like some of the amenities, like the Frisbee Golf Course, and, you know, some of those things happening here. And so I'll be watching really carefully professionally and personally as far as what, you know, might be happening here in East Bethel. And I'm very confident that, you know, this council will make the the best decisions for the community. So anyway, we're going to be monitoring, like, potential development plans, how many townhomes might be going in in the next few years and those kinds of things. Obviously, if those residences are built, you know, we want those kids to come to our school district. And I'm confident as far as what we can provide. And so we want them to experience everything that we have to offer. And then finally, is it Cambia? Is that how to pronounce that?
Yeah.
So I live about a mile, mile and a half. I have to go around a little area to get there, so I'm familiar with that building. I also toured it about, well, in January, I believe. So I'm familiar with what that facility has to offer. And I'm glad that the city is trying to to work out some plans, you know, for that particular building. And, you know, it sounds like the services that might be provided are sorely needed, and hopefully will be a good business model for whatever entity purchased it. I do have a tour again tomorrow with a gentleman and then, I think, the potential owners of that facility. And I believe they will continue to hope that we could provide educational services for the residents in that building, assuming they're still, you know, going to be a student age. So that is our obligation as a public school, you know, to provide those kinds of learning experiences for any entity in our in our district. And so we're willing to do that. We do have some concerns about staffing. Because, you know, if it's a full-fledged school opportunity, then we need to provide special education services, teachers in the core areas. We'll have some questions about how that is provided. And so we have a lot of work to do there. But I think it could be similar to the Crossroads School at Bar Nun. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But there, you know, we provide educational services, you know, to that entity as well. So financially, I don't think it's a negative for us because we would bill back the districts where the kids are coming from. However, we do have significant concerns about finding enough staff members, depending on when they want to open the facility. So again, we'll we'll pursue that one hundred and ten percent to make sure that we follow through with that. That's all I've got. So, you know, Mike may have some additional things to add, and and I'm here, we're here to answer any questions or to discuss really any school-related topic.
So with the well water at Cedar Creek, was that bacteria actually coming out of the well itself?
That's the part, that's one of the things that we're going to be, that we're still testing. So after we first heard about the report, we invited, well, we took some over-the-counter tests just to do the initial run. But then we we brought our safety consultant in to do, you know, more testing. And so they're testing it at multiple places in the system so we can determine exactly where the source is.
So it may not be actually, oh, the well itself, it could.
Could be part of the piping system or, yeah, I I really don't know. Yeah. They're all, they they took, I can't remember how many different tests they took. But I feel really confident that they took a nice broad array of tests.
Okay. And I believe you said the water at East Bethel, right next to it, is just fine?
Correct. Yep. So East Bethel Elementary School and Cedar Creek Elementary School are in separate wells. And so the the problem surfaced at Cedar Creek. But we decided to test both wells or both systems just just to make sure. And so we've gone through a couple of rounds of tests yet, and I think we'll be getting the the latest results, hopefully before Easter. We'll see.
So I I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but you know, which aquifer those wells are in as far as, would there be, would residents be tapping from the same aquifer as the school does?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know the answer to that question.
If I could though, Jack. Good for Mr. Carson here. He's our newest superintendent, and the school board hired Mr. Carson here this past year. So he comes to us with a lot of, lot of experience from the past, down at Red Wing, working down in that area. So he brings a lot of information to us. And when we voted for Mr. Carson on the final night of our three candidates, he received a seven-zero vote. And our headhunter said, that is very unusual. He has not seen a first vote unanimous for a superintendent for a long time. And our board voted seven-zero for the sweep. So Mr. Carson had the broom in his office saying seven-zero on the broom. From behind my star. So I just want to make sure you know that Carson's brand-new with us. He came on board actually July first.
July first.
Was his first meeting with us. So he brings a lot of experience to us, a lot of knowledge to help our district.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, sir.
Yeah. So this is my twenty-fifth years of superintendent in Minnesota and serving four different districts, and I I keep getting better each time. So I'm I'm actually really thankful to be in St. Francis. Living in East Bethel and working at St. Francis area schools. I was telling Brian earlier that I'm from Montana. And so I went to school at Concordia College in Morehead, and I've been here ever since. Any tough questions or anything like that?
Just want to wish you well in your new position and sure you'll enjoy it.
Thank you.
Yep. Feel free to come back if you see opportunities where the city and the school can work together in some capacity to pursue some goal or vision. That we're here with open arms and open ears.
Well, thank you, and I also appreciate Jack and Tim for meeting with us, and I know we're going to be doing that again. And I gotta put a plug in for Jack because we had that meeting at the Route sixty-five cafe. And so we had the meeting and then we exchanged business cards and that kind of thing. And maybe a few weeks later, there was an issue involving, you know, some snowbanks near the school. And so, you know, I just called Jack up and just said, this is what I'm hearing. You know, I didn't drive by it, but this is what I'm hearing, and it was done like that. And I thought that was great customer service because it was a safety issue. And so I'll tell you what, the East Bethel staff took care of it right away, so that's much appreciated.
Well, we're we're certainly glad that you're on board, and we really appreciate the school board reaching out to us. And we see this as a means of establishing a real good dialogue because I know we have a lot of common interest and a lot of mutual problems that we can solve together.
Well, thank you again for having me. I love business cards, so if you ever have any questions or complaints or concerns, whatever, please let me know.
I would, I would like to ask you that, when you get those test results on that water, if it is well, could you notify us here at the city right away?
Oh, sure. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. That will happen almost instantaneously.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Item number four, ordinance amendments. First one, A, section seventy-four dash ninety-five, identification and upgrading of standard sewage treatment facility.
In your package, you'll see a request for a proposed change to that section of the ordinance and also the existing section. It's Exhibit An Attachment One, and it is open for discussion and direction from city council.
I'll start it off. The reason I brought this up is because I was reading the old ordinance. And the way it reads, if, the way I read it anyways, if a resident wants to do something and they have to pull a permit, they have to have a sewage system treatment or certification. And that's to even get a permit for anything. So the way I looked at it, it's like, a lot of people, when they do work on their own homes or whatever, they either don't know, or even if they do know, they don't, they're not interested in pulling a permit. Well, with something like this, a certification usually, inspection will be about six hundred dollars at least. And if you have to upgrade, that depends on what it is. That could be anywhere from fifteen thousand or more. So to me, to me, that would scare off a lot of people to even think about pulling a permit for any work. Well, in my opinion of this whole thing is, that's why I wrote it up. So it's a lot easier and the people are not going to have to have a septic inspection to put in a door or a window or side their house. So to make it easier and to have people not to be afraid to come in and pull a permit, I feel that this is necessary that we change this. Because that way, there hopefully they'll come in and pull a permit.
I think it clarifies a lot of things there, Jim. This really only applies to an addition or alteration of existing plumbing. But it does make it clear that, you know, if you're just doing things that don't involve those type of activities, it just doesn't apply. So it's just maybe spelled that out a little bit better.
But it's also like in C, it's the capacity. So if you're going to put an addition or something like that on, big thing, then I understand we'd have to do a septic inspection. But for the little things, it's not necessary. So that's why I put it the way it is.
I think it's a good change in the ordinance. Clarifies it, and also, the trigger becomes determined by the owner of the property. It's their decision to add on, add capacity to the tank, rather than some employee at the city looking through records and deciding who might have a substandard or an insufficient septic system, which, you know, I don't, I don't know what criteria they work off a Ouija board or what, but.
That's, that that's actually something that we don't do.
Yeah.
So we we don't want to do that.
It literally didn't make any sense to me.
That's why, like in D, I added D to it, is because I did a lot of work for AICAP in the past years. And they always had some kind of grant for major things that we did remodeling on houses and stuff. If we ran into something like this, like a septic type thing. And usually the county has some kind of a grant that they can help the residents out with.
They they do have several programs. The big problem with that sometimes is do they have the money in there?
Right.
But they do have several programs available.
ACD, it's got, it's got grant money too.
Yeah.
The watershed? I know they do for both, so.
Oh, for people to.
Yeah. You're going to apply with the watershed and and.
Really? Good to know.
Yep.
Yeah.
Didn't know that.
So on D, would, could we change the city administrator to the city staff?
Well, depending, I guess, I look at it like, city administrator, they're going to be the one in charge. The building official, I would think, would be making the decision. So.
Yeah, but who would be looking up gra- grants?
Oh.
Would it be?
Well, if we have people to deal with that in the city or.
Yeah.
Staff would be fine. We could add that.
Yeah. Just change it to city staff.
Sure. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Can we add that, Jack?
Yes.
Maybe just and staff, something like that.
Yeah, we'll just cross that out and just put.
That'd be fine. Yep, that'll work. That won't hold up to getting that this thing moving, right?
No.
Good. Okay.
This is just a work meeting, so we're going to have the justice to go to council for direction and approval. And then we have the public hearing and go on from there.
Good. That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments? You got everything you need on that one, Jack?
Yes.
Okay. B, zoning section twenty-eight, architectural standards.
Actually, all four of these are just essentially the same, cut from the same section of the code, it's the zoning code. And there's one that deals with architectural standards, detached accessory structures, and exterior storage in the light industrial in the B-two and B-three districts. And Mr. Miller has some proposals that he would like to see some deleted and some added to the ordinance.
I think the real purpose of the agricultural architectural standards is that we can ensure the exterior of the new construction, in additions to existing buildings, are well-designed details crafted to embody high standards of architectural designs. Now, there hasn't been a lot of changes in it because what was here was was a good starting point, but it it actually was a little bit too much, and it deters businesses in a, in a sense. So you can see where the red lines are on there, and you can see that we've added just a few things to it. If there's any questions on it or discussions. I read it over. I think it's a good change.
I agree. So on number two, dash two, call it, removing pole-type building materials. Be on page six of the packet. Is that?
Five, page six. On number two?
Yeah, two, call it dash two. Where and pole-type building materials are strike-through. Is that to make it possible for pole buildings to be the primary structure?
Yeah.
So is that if that pole building can then meet the architectural standards?
Correct. Not everybody's going to have the money to build up, you know, a total brick in some of these materials listed, but if you go up and down sixty-five, there's some quality businesses that have utilized the pole buildings that were there. Just makes it a little bit easier on opening up a business or getting an existing one. One more. Looks good to me. I mean, there wasn't a lot of changes. There were just some some key changes on that, and that was one of them.
So then, moving on to page nine. For A three, exterior storage cannot exceed twelve feet in height.
Page nine.
Page nine, for Z light industrial in B-three district. That'd be for A three.
Basically, we cross, I I took that out of there. It's on your exterior storage. The ordinance for the city of East Bethel has, you know, the purpose of allowing businesses to fully use their rear yard for storage, I mean, as we're trying to change it, while maintaining the screening requirements of the original language of the ordinance.
We've got businesses that have already are using storage in excess of twelve feet. So I mean, it's not like we're, we're getting rid of something we're enforcing. We're, we're just making it easier along with the setbacks for, you know, the rear of the building and so forth. To allow these people to have storage for their business on their facilities. Uh, right now, it's, it's, it's very limited.
Well, do we want a height restriction? Uh, I'm thinking.
No, no, that's, that's, you know, that's what we're here, let's talk about.
I'm thinking of the, the perspective of a neighboring business where the neighboring business, if we don't have a height restriction, they put up storage twenty feet right along the fence line and it blocks all their views or whatever, what have you. They have some sort of complaint that the twenty-foot height, they don't like it for name a reason why they don't like it. I'm just seeing where that could be an issue.
Yeah, that's why it's, that's why it's crossed out. Twelve feet, I don't think is high enough for these businesses, uh, to extend it above the, the roof line or the, the height of the main building. I'm open for that, I'm open for, you know, something that's fair and in between. I mean, I, I can see your point. And I can see points where if they're not by any buildings or other businesses too, you know, that they'd like to utilize that. So I don't know if there's a way we can incorporate the best of both worlds in this to make it a maximum of, of something, uh, unless, you know, we approve something different. But the main goal i- is to open up the backyards, to open up these places where they can bring in more inventory, where they can invest more, uh, where they don't have to use outside storage or they have to, you know, order inventory, you know, right on time, stuff like that, that they can bring in stuff to use.
I would advocate going with it and see if it becomes a problem. Instead of anticipating the problem in advance and trying to prevent it.
Just go by business by business or something.
Well, just, is, is it gonna be an issue? From a practical standpoint, the, the lift on a forklift outdoors to get stuff off of, there's, it's a practical limit on how high they go generally. You're not gonna buy a hundred and eighty thousand dollar forklift to go pick up a piece of pipe or something, you know, instead of a forty-foot forklift. So you, it's really, uh, the reach for a forklift, practically speaking, is maybe fifteen feet. Something like that in most cases or less.
One other consideration on that too is by expanding the square footage of the existing storage is gonna give them more space too. So you're not gonna have to do heights to get more area in that one location. Uh, I can only think of one location in the city that does have storage higher than twelve feet. So I, I, I don't think it's gonna, it's not a common problem, but you know, it's something that can be addressed too as we go down the road and it comes up again.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just go with it and just see, see what happens, get, get some experience. The whole point of these things is to make it easier for existing businesses to use their property that they paid for and pay taxes on everything as much as they can without an extra site for storage or what have you. And to make it more enticing for businesses to wanna come to East Bethel because we don't have a rule about every dang thing you could possibly think of. I mean, I'm, I'm a libertarian, so stuff like this grates my gears real good cause it's like people who have no money invested have all the control over how you use your facility. And that would not be, I wouldn't be loving it if I had a million dollars tied up in a facility. I just wanna store some stuff that has to be thirteen feet high. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we can't do that cause it says right, you know, come on. That's, that's ridiculous, it's.
I agree, Kevin, too many rules is not good.
No. It discourages people from investing here.
You bet, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah, and they're limited right now with what they can use behind there, so I mean, that's gonna.
I was just talking to a guy the other day who, he, he wants to acquire some land and it's because of restrictions on what he can do with it that's holding him back from doing it. You know, it's, it's a common thing, it's not uncommon, it's common. Whether they're already here or they're looking at coming here. You know, you've got enough obstacles running a business these days supplied by the federal and state governments. You don't need to be doing it on a local level too. And I wanna compliment you, Tim, on going to the, this is the heavy lifting kinda work when you sit there. And I mean, ordinances are not war and peace, you know, they're not captivating in any way. And then plow through them and look at, look how to make changes to make it more doable for people to have businesses here or to be attracted here is a, is the heavy lifting part of the work, so compliment you on it.
Thank you.
Glad it wasn't me. Glad I didn't have to do it.
Well, if we can get a chance to strike out that year or that, the rear yard storage limitations, you know, those operating in the light industrial B two, B three zones, the limitations on the storage racks for inventory and simplify the, the code by combining some of this stuff. I, I think businesses are, are, are going to definitely benefit from it.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's.
I agree.
I mean, that's what we wanna do.
Yeah, if we can get, the, the number one thing that sells business people on locating in a place is, is it, is it a city who wants to work with business people? That's the number one thing. It's not, will they give us a bunch of money? It's not, you know, other things, it's, are they people who understand business and are willing to work with us? And, cause I can tell you one thing from having done corporate planning, plans are written to be changed. Nobody with any sense who's, who's in that work says, oh, well, we can't do it because the plan says you get that, you get thrown right out of the place. No, the plan doesn't govern, it's just a guideline. But when, when circumstances change, because you can't anticipate every change in circumstances, reality trumps the plan. Every time, you know, that's the way, that's just the way the real world works.
So do we wanna keep the twelve foot in there or modify that?
I thought it was deleted.
I took it out.
Okay.
Leave it deleted.
We're gonna go out on a limb and take a big risk.
Yeah.
Could lead to disaster. But I don't think it will.
Good job, Tim.
Yeah. So now all the ordinance reviews and changes will assign to you, is that? You're our guy for that.
Well, I got the six hundred and twelve page book at home.
You're the one with the big book.
Now, the, the, the question now remains, and I was informed by the city attorney, that traditionally, these ordinance changes that refer to zoning have gone back to the planning commission for their change and then recommendation to city council. However, the state statute reads that it can go to the planning commission or the governing body. So if it goes to the planning commission, it would go to the planning commission on the twenty-fifth and then come back to city council on May the eighth. If it goes to the city council, it will go to the city council on April the twenty-fourth. And we can hold a public hearing and make the decision at that time.
And Jack, if it went to the planning commission, they would hold the public, public hearing themselves?
They would hold a public hearing on April the twenty-fifth.
So council would not have to?
And then council wouldn't have to hold a public hearing.
Well, we wanna work with the planning commission, so as a good faith gesture, we're gonna do exactly what's called for.
All right.
So I mean that, I mean that, that's sincere, that's not making a joke.
So we'll send this to the planning commission then on April the twenty-fifth, they'll have the public hearing.
Yep.
And then it can come back to city council at a meeting on May the eighth.
Do things according to oil, remember that expression, Jack?
Absolutely.
That dates me, huh? According to oil.
So you got everything you need there, Jack?
I do.
Okay. Moving on, item number five, community development director update.
The job advertisement for the community development director's position was first advertised on December second, two thousand twenty-two, but received only five applicants. At the direction of council on December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, staff was authorized to re-advertise the position. The second ad ran from January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three until February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The re-advertising resulted in two additional applications. Both ad postings were run in the Inoka Union Herald, the League of Minnesota Cities Job Opportunities website, the city of East Bethel's website, city media outlets, and eastbetheljob.com and Indeed. Indeed is an offshoot of the jobs.com, which is essentially a data mining service. In the last four years experienced with the tight job market and expecting the continued pattern of low response from additional advertisements, the top three advert, applicants were invited for interviews. Interviews were sent on February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and interviews were scheduled for March second, two thousand twenty-three. Two of the invited candidates withdrew their application three days before the scheduled interview and as a result, only one applicant was interviewed by the personnel committee. The March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting, council tabled a recommendation to approve a hire for the community development director's position. Council requested that staff expand their advertising to widen the search for the candidate. Staff has explored three government-related job recruiting services and found their cost range from twenty to thirty percent of the first year's salary of the position as their fee. A quote was received from the firm of SGR in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars for that service and that's shown in attachment one in your packet. We have not inquired as to a reduced scope of work at a lesser cost for this service from this firm. Two other government job-related staffing services we've requested quotes from were from Gov, HR, and Baker Tilly. Gov, HR has responded and has requested a meeting to discuss their services, but they have expressed concerns that our salary for this position is below rate and may affect recruitment in the current candidate market. We have not received a response from Baker Tilly at this time the report was written. However, I did have a discussion with the city of North Branch, they used the firm of Baker and Tilly to hire a community development, economic development director and the cost of that service from them was thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Staff is also working with Greg Gillis and Oak County Regional Economic Development Director and Mr. Gillis will be providing us additional information regarding the advertising contacts for this position. The city's had very little response in the past from past job ads placed in the Star Tribune. We could use them again and these ads usually run approximately two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars for a Sunday publication. In summary, the LMC site is the primary source for those looking for city employment is usually the first place job seekers in the profession look for the positions. Beyond the sources we have used, we could advertise in the Star Tribune and utilize the contacts Mr. Gilli provides to expand the coverage for their candidate search. I did have some discussions and finally had some people get back to me today. St. Francis advertised for a similar type position about a year ago. Used the same sources we had, but they did use LinkedIn. I had the staff start setting up a city account for LinkedIn that we can put this on that site, which I think will be useful. And they also had some significant issues in, uh, finding candidates for this position. They advertised three times, finally got six interviews before they hired a person. So our timetable, if we don't use a recruiting service for re-advertising and recommendation to city council is by no later than May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, city council meeting and staff would use advertisements in the Star Tribune and LinkedIn or any other sources that council would like to recommend us to pursue.
I wanna propose an elegant solution. Always liked that phrase, elegant solution. Uh, for the third time, I'm gonna mention this, this is the third time I'm saying this. There is no provision in our city code for a community development director. It's very clear that in the community development department, there are two managers, if you will. One is the city planner, who's the head of the city planning division. And the other is the building official, who's the head of the inspection and ordinance enforcement division. That's what our city code calls for, okay? Ham Lake, while it's geographically smaller than East Bethel, has actually got thirty-eight percent more people. And they have, they don't have a community development director. And yeah, they're, they're a, what do they call it, a something charter.
Charter city.
Home rule, home rule charter, yeah. But that doesn't really matter in this case. What they have, I talked to this woman about seven weeks ago, maybe. Her name's Julie Borer and she is the building and zoning clerk at Ham Lake. That's who they have to coordinate, working with outside people who are interested in buying land, developing businesses, developing residences, whatever. And I said, well, how do you do that? You know, and, uh, she said, well, I coordinate, you know, the people come in, I coordinate it with the city administrator and with the city engineer who does the bulk of the work, really, you know, as far as drainage and all this other stuff. And with the city attorney to a lesser extent, with things come to a, you know, where you're signing documents and all that, then they get involved. And I said, that's, that's it? And I said, how, how well does that work? She said, it works great, you know? And I thought, huh. So with that, oh, and by the way, Ms. Borer, I happen to know her salary. I, I got a spreadsheet, an enormous spreadsheet from the League of Minnesota Cities that was current as of November, two thousand twenty-two. It has virtually every city in Minnesota and what everybody who works at all the cities makes, to the extent they reported it. And Ms. Borer makes approximately what Aaron Berg makes now as, I mean, there it says, Aaron Berg, Community Development Director, right there. Even his name tag, it's already made up. But as city planner plus, you know? And I'm not advocating that we return Aaron to his, what his salary was when he was first made city planner. Aaron impresses me as a, just, you know, as a professional. He's prepared, he has subject matter knowledge, speaks well, you know, he's, he's very responsive to people. But I don't, I don't see that we need anything more than the city planner. I really don't. And then it, it makes, the elegant solution is all of this other stuff just goes away, you don't have to go looking for anybody. You just have Aaron be the city planner, that's all. It's, all it is is a title and an, and an explanation or excuse for paying people a lot of, a lot more money. And I'm not gonna get into the genesis of where this came from. I've heard various stories and I don't really care about them. But the fact is that we can get everything done that we need done with Aaron as a city planner and Nick or whomever as the building official. And we have a, we have a city engineer who knows East Bethel well and knows the projects. And that's what they have in Ham Lake too. Same person has been their city engineer for twen- twenty-five years or something. I mean, he knows really well what he's doing. And, you know, city attorney is certainly workable, so that's the elegant solution I'm proposing is we don't need it to do it at all. We have the solution in hand, it's just maybe not called by the name you want or something, but that's what our city code calls for and that's what I think is the solution to this whole thing. Is just have Aaron be the city planner at the enhanced salary made, you know, we, we agreed in December to an extra thousand dollars a month, twelve thousand a year, that puts him very, I mean, within like a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars of what Ms. Borer makes, so. That's all comparable and it, the job is the same. He works with the city engineer, city administrator, city attorney, building inspector, whatever, same thing. That's my, that's my honest, and I've thought about this considerable amount, obviously, spent time talking to Julie. I know Mike Van Kirk, the former mayor of Ham Lake, he and I have talked about it, it works great for them. So I, I propose that's the solution. And that's all I gotta say about that.
So Jack, what was the, what did the job of the community development director do versus the city planner?
The community development director was in charge of overall the building department, city planning, code enforcement, zoning, city planning, code enforcement, zoning, and the overall planning activities of the city itself, the higher level stuff like meeting the requirements from its council, and was active in the economic development end of the efforts that the city was putting in for recruitment of business and industry. They also worked heavily with the EDA in doing the business retention and recruitment plan, things of this nature. So they did have some more responsibilities, but you know, if you want to do something and develop a job description for this, that's certainly...
Well, I come from private industry. There are many times I took on additional work, and I didn't get a pay raise. I didn't get a title change. I just had more work, that's all. It's just part of the deal. And, and, you know, so I, I don't, and, and, you know, I can understand, maybe you want to farm off some of your work to this community development director, but the fact is, I think that's a critical part of being a city administrator, is the development, the community development. And you're certainly plugged in and talk to a lot of people, and so, you know, I think, I think what I've said is completely workable and rational and reasonable. But again, that's my opinion.
Well, my understanding is why we got the community development director was with the sewer and water development that we needed to have a, start an economic engine and have a person dedicated just to working on that.
But what's the EDA for?
EDA is not staff.
Well, it doesn't matter if it's staff or not, I think...
Well, EDA has one meeting a month.
The EDA, that's their, that's their sole function.
And the community development director prepares everything for the EDA to talk about.
I agree with Kevin.
And with Jack.
I agree with Kevin. We've got plenty of people inside the city here that can take over, and I'll fill in and help to get this stuff done. We don't need to hire one person at a hundred and some thousand a year for one thing. Everybody can work together. I believe we have enough employees here now. That's my opinion.
Maybe it's because I'm fresh off opening my, once again, property tax increase, and I'm wondering, huh, sure seems like a lot of money gets sucked out of the people in this community, so I'm, I'm mindful that I'd like to keep it as, I want, I want people paid well who work for East Bethel. We have great, great staff, but if it's, if, unless it's essential, I don't see the point. I don't see this, if, just from a business standpoint, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do this. It's not where I'd put the money. Not one fireman to, you know, we're, we're having a hard time recruiting people for the fire department, and you start out and you make less than you make flipping burgers at McDonald's. That's one place I'd like to see money put. And again, it's personal. My, my neighbors and close friends is, he's on the fire department and all that, four kids and all that. But that's where I'd put money. It's not at the top. You know, the top people, you know, suck up a lot of the oxygen in the room, but they're not necessarily, I'm not looking at you for a particular reason, Jack. But, you know, we have to make sure that the, the people doing the day-to-day grunt work, if you will, are also taken care of. And in the fire department, I see a disparity that I've noticed over time as getting educated about it. And I think, and I agree with, somebody said, well, people don't do it for the money. I agree with that to an extent. But the fact is, when you're giving up time away from your family and all, it better be worth it in one thing. And as Rod's, Rod said very clearly, people, these people see things nobody should have to see. You know, so, yeah, you're, it takes a special person, someone who really is committed to helping and same as law enforcement, protecting others, helping others in need. It takes a real, unique kind of person, but it also is fine if they make some more money too. And I'd like to see money, and it's going to come up with the, with the charitable stuff, is to see it, you know, not just for law enforcement, but also for the fire department. And I'm not stealing your thunder at all, Tim. I know you're very close with the fire department and all, but I, I think they, they need to be better taken care of financially. And not, not in terms of gear, not in terms of building on to, you know, it's the people. Put more money in their pocket, and I think it helps. I don't think it hurts, anyway. Don't all speak at once.
Jack, how much of a workload will this put on the existing employees?
Well, I've never been one to complain about a workload, and it does put some different things on there, but sometimes we've had to shift some responsibilities around, maybe reestablish some priorities. You know, it definitely could be done, but there will have to be maybe a few changes made in the amount of things that we can do or the timeliness of getting certain things done. But those priorities would have to be established in relation to what we need to get done here at the city.
And we're also in a period where, thanks to the Federal Reserve and raising interest rates, full five hundred basis points, which is the most they've ever been raised in that time period since, I think, the Great Depression or something, we noticed that commercial construction has softened, residential construction has softened.
Residential hasn't.
Yes, it has.
I'm in residential construction.
I don't care. I'm talking about nationwide. I'm not talking about just in your backyard. Any, anybody knows this. Not in Florida, not next to Phoenix, no, but, you know, other places in the country. So I don't think we're going to be besieged with inquiries. I'd love it if we were, but I don't think we're going to be besieged with inquiries. And at least, like in business, you find out. If you need more people, you can always try to find more people. I'm not suggesting that, oh, we should get rid of Aaron or something, not at all. I think he's a great employee. But I just don't think we have to go overboard with the community developer thing.
I think what you're saying makes sense for the city right now. Absolutely. It makes total sense. It gets rid of a lot of different areas that we don't want to have to deal with in terms of going through advertising for a lot of things.
Well, now it'll free up Jack to go out and get new business prospects. Gotcha. Just, just pulling your leg, Jack. But, you know, yeah, I mean, if you don't have to do something, it frees up time.
You know, and there can always be some adjustments made for what responsibilities, you know, here, which would open a door for some more city workers to excel in different areas also. But I like Aaron, too. I think, I think Aaron's a great guy.
And if in six months or twelve months, eighteen months, whatever the time period, oh, boy, we, we definitely need this. Things are changing. Great. You change with the need. You don't anticipate the need and play prevent defense on, against future possibilities. It's, it's not the way you manage a business, anyway. I don't know if that's the way government manages itself or not. This is my first foray, foray into government since I worked as an ocean lifeguard when I was seventeen, so it's been a couple centuries since I've worked with government, so.
So would you like for me to come up with a position that fits the city planner position, present that back to council and see if some...
Well, isn't it, don't you already have a job description for a city planner?
Yeah, we do, but we got to change, we got to add the other...
Oh, yeah, you can tweak it, yeah.
Yeah, it just needs to be tweaked, and we can present it and let you look at it and go from there. I, I'd really like to get this done, and you know, I don't think we need to hire a recruiting or staffing service for this position.
Not twenty-seven thousand dollars.
No.
And let's just find a way to get this done and get it going so we'll know how to establish our priorities and what our workload is.
Yeah, let's move on. And see what comes, you know? Maybe the EDA is going to bring in just tons of new stuff, and Aaron won't be besieged and, you know, crushed under the workload, and then we'll make a change.
Well, let's, let's, let's hope that's what happens.
Yeah.
So you got everything you need, Jack?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to item number six, charitable gambling proceeds, proceeds distribution.
This item originally wasn't scheduled for the agenda, but this may be a request that city council is going to be receiving, possibly at the next meeting or a meeting coming up. I just wanted to give the council a little bit of background on this, so that if we get the request, we'll at least have some footing to go from to make a decision and won't be caught cold with it. But essentially, back in two thousand and six, I believe, the city adopted a statute, a gambling tax that was imposed on those organizations that ran charitable gambling. This gambling tax was calculated and based, so those people, the establishments that were involved in charitable gambling and did the pull tabs, were paying three percent of the gross back to the city. These funds were totally earmarked for payment for the sheriff's contract. In two thousand and twenty, with the advent of COVID, we started seeing a spike in our charitable gambling proceeds. It went up to seventy-one thousand dollars. The cost of the program to administer it was about forty thousand dollars with what the time involved with the sheriff's department was and some city staff time. Also, at that time, the gambling control board also said that the use of sheriff's department time to patrol the exterior business would no longer be an eligible cost. So the city switched to a, their secondary program of receiving ten percent of the net profit from these organizations is the payment of the gambling tax. And this reduced our proceeds down from seventy-one thousand, I believe, to thirty-five thousand. We're probably projecting about thirty-one thousand this year. Now, this thirty-one thousand dollars can be used for multiple purposes, as opposed to the other, which can only be used for the payments to sheriff's department contract. Currently, we're using all the proceeds now. It goes into a fund that pays a portion of the sheriff's contract. However, I said, had two attachments. One's a state statute, one's a little simple form that shows what these funds can be used for. There's also a chart in there that shows what other cities are doing with their use of the charitable gambling proceeds. My recommendation at this time is we just continue to use these to pay for the sheriff's contract. I'm afraid if we start taking requests for donations, then there's going to be a point in time where we're not going to be able to fulfill them all, and then we're going to have to start picking winners and losers. Plus, it'll leave another hole in our budget that we'd have to fill for that thirty-one thousand dollars for the sheriff's contract. So I'm just looking for some direction or just some questions that you might want to ask in case that a group does come before us and request a donation from these charitable gambling funds, for one of the purposes that are listed here is legal purposes for expenditures of those monies.
Jack, so I'm wondering, the first, you said the three percent was of the gross receipts?
Three percent was of the...
So why did it change, then, to go to the net? Was that something that had to be done, or...
Yeah, the, well, it did because the gambling control board, we started getting so much more money in.
Right.
This, this peaked.
They didn't like that.
No, they didn't like it, and then they said, you know, we can no longer, they changed their rules and regulations internally to say that we couldn't use this to cover the sheriff's department patrol costs for these, these places. So...
So then they made it the net instead of the gross?
That, that's correct.
That took a big chunk away.
And wasn't it the, the new funds had to be audited, too, or something?
Uh, that's part of the city audit. We submit a report to them every year on...
Yeah, but with having the, the gross of the reasons why we changed it, gross versus net.
The, the only thing, we submitted our, our annual gambling report, that was the audit, but then it's part of our original city audit, too.
I had a question. Who gets the gas stations, when they have the scratch offs and stuff like that? Is that all state-run, then? So it has nothing to do with it?
Actually, we have five businesses in the city that are eligible to do the charitable gambling.
Right.
And those are listed, and none of the gas stations are on there, so...
Okay.
Does the gas stations look the same way? Or, or they have to donate?
Not on charitable gambling, no, no.
Okay. So it's different.
Isn't charitable gambling mostly the pull that, pull tab?
Correct. That's basically what it is.
And that's basically ran by a different organization, local organization?
Each, each, each one of these things has to have a gambling manager on premise, so it's set up and controlled quite strictly by a gambling control board.
Does that include the electronic stuff they're doing now at the bars?
Yes.
So if an organization does come in and request a donation, are we able to make a donation, or what's, what's the alternative?
If it, if it's an eligible expense and it falls in any of these categories, we can actually make a donation. And as you see, too, one of the eligible expenses in there is expenditures of police, fire, and other emergency public safety-related services, equipment, and training. Not allowed, though, is contributing, contributions to pension or retirement funds. So what we've done with this money is it's used as a portion of the funds used to pay the annual sheriff's department contract.
So, so if we have a... One of the local sports teams come in and ask for a donation, is that acceptable?
That is probably an eligible expense.
An eligible?
Eligible.
Okay.
And, you know, the, my, you know, the only thing with that is, you know, then are you going to get every sports team?
Right.
From girls hockey, boys hockey, baseball, softball, football, coming in asking for donations?
You've got two schools in this city, too, so it's not going to be just St. Francis, it's going to be Forslake.
Yeah, Forslake's a school district, too, that could be requesting things.
How many, how many hands are you going to have?
And, you know, that, that, that's the thing we got to decide, is are we going to entertain this? If we do, we need to develop a policy and an application and make sure we have some control over it, and, but I just fear this may set a precedent that opens up the doors for things that may exceed, eventually exceed, how much money we actually have.
Did you guys talk about possibly earmarking part? It, it can be multiple things, right?
Yes.
Part of it, I, I under, I keep hearing that the parks account, or whatever you want to call it, is pretty well depleted, or there's not enough money to do much under the parks commission, and I wonder if part of the money could go toward, you know, something for the residents to enjoy, and what we enjoy in common are the open spaces.
I'd have to check on that. I don't think that's an eligible expense.
Why, why wouldn't it be?
Because it's not listed as one of them. And the, the reasoning is, they say, public safety is one. That's why we're able to give the money and contribute it toward the sheriff's department.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's a good, good thing to give it to, but I just wonder if some of it could go into the parks, given that they seem to be short.
That's something I can research and get something back to us at the next meeting, though.
Yeah, we could just take it out of your salary, one of the two. Sorry, Jack, I'm having fun with you tonight.
So, Jack, I mean, basically, the money that we're getting is just use thirty-one thousand for the example. We don't have to give it to anybody else, though, right?
No, we don't have to. It's just...
Because if we are using it for the sheriff's department, or if we can use it maybe for parks or whatever, we're better off to do that than start to give it away to somebody else, because this is what we're getting already given to us. So if we're going to give it away, then it's a loss to us.
Yeah. And, and, then, 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 too, the businesses that conduct the charitable gambling give, they're required to give so much to charitable organizations or community projects. So a lot, a lot of those give to some of the local sports teams, and I think one of our businesses is looking maybe for, maybe some of the local sports team to contact them. I know they currently give money, some money to the Andover Hockey Association, so...
Well, it's funny you should ask this stuff, because we've been working behind the scenes, trying to figure out how to utilize these places that have... how to utilize these places that have the profits and they have to basically donate a certain percentage. Now, the talk, and we've had a few talks already, and this is jumping the gun a little bit with 'cause I wanted to talk to the Parks Commission to get their input, but we're trying to secure a way that we can get some of this money from these organizations for the trails in the city. They'd be investing in the city and in themselves to bring these trails to these various places, Route sixty five, Smokies, EJs. We've contacted a couple places about the natural uh, covering on them. And we've got some very good ends with some wood chip companies out here that basically would almost give it, give us the stuff for these trails. And we would have to, you know, utilize it as we see fit. So we're jumping the gun a little bit with this, what we're talking about here tonight, but hopefully, we can put together a plan that we can get ten, twenty percent from some of these businesses. And they'd be investing in the residents. It would take the parks and commission money and and have a steady, you know, flow into it. We can either also build up funds waiting a while on this stuff and utilize grants. There's some stuff out there that we can get matching funds for these trails. So there there's a few things that we're working on behind the scene that um, that could play out to be a very beneficial move for the city and to get us more involved with the businesses. Have them invest in themselves. They can have their name on the trails, you know, sponsored by. People playing the pull tabs in these places would know exactly where the money was going. It's going for the city, and it's going to to develop these trails and start connecting these places that we have here and not put a tax burden on our residents. So little insight here to to what's been going on.
Thanks for mentioning that. Thanks for mentioning that, yeah. Didn't know that.
Well, we're working on it. So hopefully, it'll it'll come out and then we all can benefit from it.
Yeah.
You got everything you need, Jack?
And again, that's just FYI in case, just a little bit of background on that. Um, I'm surprised we haven't been asked for donations already, but I did talk with someone that said they may be approaching the council to ask for one. Wanted to know what the council's position was, and I said, well, they didn't really have a position now. We'd never been requested. Then I would brief them on the subject, and they could, if they wanted to come and make a presentation, they were certainly more than welcome, but uh, that's why I bring this up tonight.
Item number seven, John Anderson Park Trail update.
Uh, we had a discussion last week. There was a lady that came and spoke in opposition to a little trail connection between John Anderson Park and two hundred and thirty seventh lane. Uh, this would be a connection that would then lead into Jackson Street and go south to Bondi Park. Nate and I have looked at this, and we'd like to meet with, uh, I believe her name was Karina and sit down and talk with her about some options and see if she was comfortable with any of them, and then bring back our results of that meeting to city council. She's more than welcome to come back and respeak too. Uh, I understand her concerns, and we may have some options that may address them or may not. We just wanna present those to her and see if she's interested in the option. So we'd like to meet with her and then come back to council and present our findings, and we can go from there on a decision on what to do with this one segment.
Sounds good.
Now, there is a segment within the park itself that's ready for paving. The city has done the work in preparation for that. We're gonna take bids on that, but that'll just be within the park itself, so it'll make kind of a loop trail in John Anderson Park. And those will be presented to council here and probably in May for a decision on that. But the connector is up in the air, and we can work on that and see if we can do anything to alleviate Karina's concerns with that, and if not, then we can postpone it or go another direction.
So right now, Jack, it's just staked, right? I was over there and took a look at it.
That's correct. Yeah, it's it's.
Do we have done anything else?
No, we haven't done anything at all, and we won't do anything until we talk to her and get back to council.
Do you have a separate price on that trail?
Uh. Well, we'd get one. What we'd do, we'd just put it out for bids. Uh, we could come up with an estimate, but right now, I'm thinking that I'd rather concentrate on the one that's internal to the park. Get that done first, and this other one, if it if it's can be done in the future, it can be done in the future, because the easement's still there.
Yeah, 'cause personally, I don't think this one's necessary. That's just my opinion, 'cause it goes to a cul-de-sac almost.
What drives this trail business? Is it the comprehensive plan or something?
This is one that's in the, I believe it's in that two thousand and eight Parks Plan that was prepared fifteen years ago. Uh, it's one that the city council or cities discussed.
Was it prepared by met council or prepared by an independent consultant or something?
Prepared by a consultant that the city hired. So, uh, this doesn't have anything to do with with the met council. It's just part of a way of trying to develop some of the trails, plans, and proposals for the city. This is one that could connect a park to a park. You know, they were trying to make sure that if they did something, it wouldn't be a trail to nowhere. Uh, but this is just one of the things that came up. This is one that would have been easy to do in terms of just the distance.
Right.
But that's all took into account.
Yeah.
Right, 'cause I mean, down there, basically, it it goes to two hundred and thirty fifth Avenue. Then you gotta take that all the way to Jackson.
Yeah.
Then you gotta go all the way down to Bondi Park, and to be, it's like, I would say, no, it's worthless. Put it on hold at least for now.
Well, at the very least, it would connect the neighborhood of two thirty fifth to John Anderson Park to the neighborhood at two thirty third. That was kind of the point of having small trails like this is to connect neighborhoods and give places people to walk to without spending a whole lot on trails.
If I was over in that cul-de-sac, I would just drive over to John Anderson Park. I don't need a trail to go there. There's not that many houses there.
Not everybody wants to drive.
Am I, is it just me, or is there something incongruous about asphalt paths being a nature walk? I mean, it's just like, I I don't, and I understand it's for bicycles and and people with, you know, limited mobility or stuff. I I get it, but it just doesn't seem.
And and that that would be the reasons for asphalt, it's for bicycle traffic and for handy PDA access.
Right, right. Okay.
So we'll meet with Karina and address and talk to her, and we'll report back to council, and we can go from there then.
Do you have any interest in being in that meeting, Tim?
I was just thinking about it, 'cause I think it's very important that.
'Cause he's on the Parks Commission, yeah?
Yeah, it it Karina has some very valid concerns as a single mom and and a trail going through her property on a cul-de-sac. It it might be a great thing for a couple people, but for one particular resident, it's 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 a nightmare.
Yeah.
You know, and the fact that we're we're taking a step back and and talking to her, I mean, that's what we need to do as a city. We need to find out what we can do if we wanna do this to make it right for her, you know, and the residents. So I would like to be there. I would would like to hear what she has to say. I know where it's been. I've seen it. Is there something we can do? If there's not, we we won't.
Now, I'll I'll set some times up to see when she's available and let you know.
Thank you.
Are we still on at one tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
You got everything, Jack?
Yes.
I just got one update. I wanna let these guys know, I don't know if it's this month or next month, there's gonna be some big bills coming for maintenance. They blew three trucks up this weekend. They blew the rear end out of one. They broke the wing on one, and then they blew almost every hydraulic hose on another truck, so they're they're down to three trucks right now. I hope we don't get any snow. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that, uh, you'll probably be seeing some big bigger bills for the maintenance when it comes out this month or next month, so.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, that's all I got.
So they're not gonna let you drive them anymore? Is that the bottom?
I asked to drive them, but they they're worried about mailboxes, so.
We can't afford to have Tim Tim take the gear out for enjoyment.
Well, one of them was a newer truck to that. That's what's kinda, I hope that's under warranty. I hope that's under warranty.
Was one of the Macs?
What's that?
Was it one of the Macs? One of the Mac trucks?
Yeah. No, no, the, uh, is it the Western?
No, the Western, sir.
I think it was the Western, yeah. Yeah, so. I just hope we don't get any snow. Otherwise, like I said, they were out thirteen hours on Saturday 'cause of that heavy snow went down to three trucks, so.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we won't get anything tomorrow night or Wednesday.
Is there any progress on the verbatim transcription topic?
I'm glad I'm glad you asked that.
Well, you sent me that email saying ask me about that. No, I'm okay.
I I do have, I did some quotes today. And if you'd like, I could pass them out, and we can make this a topic of discussion at the next council meeting.
Sure.
But, um, this is what I got back from Time Savers. They say they can do that. There's an estimate there on the cost, and they said that they would do one so we could see what it looked like. Now, one of the things on this is, you know, everything on there, every mm, ur, uh, and grunt is gonna be recorded. But they do have the voice recognition software, specialty stuff that they can do the verbatim. So there it is, and on the back is a comparison of what we paid for minutes for the first quarter of this year and an estimate then of what it would be if it were more of the verbatim types. But I say, let's get one and let them do it, and we can take a look at it and see what it is.
Yeah, 'cause like the, uh, majority of the minutes that we've had, they haven't been accurate, any of them. So now, does that cost us extra to fix that, or do you fix that?
No, and and one thing that she, in talking with her, she said, it's not that they're not accurate. They're not a complete transcript, so there are some things that aren't in there. They're trying to summarize them as best they can. If there's any change that need to be added, then that's our job to do that with the summary type minutes. We can do that. We can make additions at city council if there's substantial changes to the minutes, and we can make the edits we want to before we approve them.
Can I ask something? Uh, you know, the planning commission didn't meet as they were scheduled to, uh, last week. Um, I just wondered on that front street septic situation, where where's that at? Are they just gonna take it up at their next meeting?
It'll be on the next planning commission meeting.
Okay, that's what I, that's all I wanted to know. Okay.
One more thing to do.
Make motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.